The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Well, hi and welcome to I on Oshkosh. I am Tony Palmieri, guest hosting for Cheryl Hens. And the reason why I'm guest hosting is because our show today deals with the Oshkosh Common Council, and I will be interviewing four candidates. As you know, Cheryl is running for the council, and so she is not hosting or co-hosting the show on these programs, although in the second half hour she will be a guest and we'll interview her about her candidacy. In the first half hour, I will be joined by the two incumbents, Brian Peschel and Shirley Brabender-Maddox, and then in the second half hour, I will have Cheryl along with challenger Meredith Shireman. Should be an exciting hour. This half hour, we will have, and I'm really pleased that they're here, the two incumbents running, and they are Brian Peschel.
Thank you.
Who is seeking his second term.
Yes.
And Shirley Maddox, who is seeking her third term.
Third term.
All right, thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. I want to start off talking about the amphitheater. And the latest issue dealing with this deals with finding a manager for the facility, someone to handle promotions and concessions. At the last meeting, Shirley, it looked like the choices were going to be either PMI out of Green Bay or the Suppley Group out of Oshkosh, the folks who own Fertellows. And there was a vote to lay over until the March 8th meeting. Have you decided yet how you're going to vote on this? It looked at the last meeting like you were leaning toward PMI.
Right. I was and I am. And I don't know if you, what's your question is, do you want to know why I laid it over?
Yeah. No. The question is, why do you support PMI?
PMI, okay. I think the food among all the people that were interviewing for this was going to be excellent. And the difference was the ability of PMI to have connections with nationally known AX, regional, local. And I feel that that's absolutely necessary if you're going to have a 7,000-seat amphitheater.
Although there are no seats in the amphitheater.
No, but we got the grass. And there, you know, it can accommodate up to over 7,000 people. That we must be able to draw from a larger pool of arts. And if we're going to make any money, we're going to do it with the bigger groups.
Brian, how are you going to vote on this? Do you know yet?
Ah, yes, I have made up my choice as far as with looking over the brochure from PMI and both book, it's the one from Suppley Hopper Group also. At, I am well-bred in the City of Oshkosh, and they both have a lot of good things, but I would like to keep it home-based with the Suppley Group as far as being hometown. I believe they both have excellent venues. The PMI's been involved in so many national choices. They list of all the big-time concerts, if you mean like next week, the Kenny Chesney one, and some of those big-time names. They've had the middle names, they've had the low names. But being the City of Oshkosh, I'd like to keep it homegrown here. And where we have the contacts in the city of Suppleys, I know the Hopper side of it's from Fond du Lac with all the radio stations. But I look at the contact in the future. I don't want to see this as far as given to a group that's out of Green Bay, that all of a sudden something changes, we may have a hard time communicating when they're not right in the same city.
Let me ask you a question, and I'm going to ask Shirley the same question. Why can't the City of Oshkosh run this? Back in November, Mr. Stefani, I thought was pretty passionate that the city could run the concessions. He said, "That's the only way the city's going to make any money off this." Don't you think the city can sell, serve beer and hot dogs?
I agree that they can, and I was one of them at that time that supported the Parks Department doing the concession stand, which did lose at that time. I had hoped it would, because you're right, that's where you do make the money as far as you have the group that comes in, no matter what size they are, that bring the people to the venue of the amphitheater. And yes, that's where you make the money, just like a local movie. You may pay a couple bucks to go to the movie, it costs you 20 bucks for the popcorn and the soda. That's where money is to be made. I wish it would have stayed in the Parks Department, but they didn't put in a proposed lead though when they sent out the RFPs, so that kind of surprised me.
Yeah, I was surprised that they didn't also. And Shirley, don't you think that the city could run this? And I don't mean just the concessions. Why can't the city even run the concerts?
Now, can you pick up the telephone and talk to the president?
I don't, what do you?
Well, okay, it's the same thing. If you want to book Cher, you cannot pick up the phone. Richard Wallink does not have any connections. And all of this is built on years of connections and knowing who to call. And you're in this stream, you've got access to Clear Channel, to Frank Productions.
Okay. I'm just wondering what connections UW Oshkosh had when we got Bob Dylan.
Didn't the students do that?
Yeah, I mean, so the students can get Bob Dylan, but the City of Oshkosh can't?
Well, did the students lose money?
I don't know.
I think so, and I was there. But I, but from what I heard was, they paid a lot of money, and if you're going to be a promoter, and that's another whole question, the city doesn't have any money, so they have no business being in the promotion business.
But the money would come, but what we keep hearing from PMI and from Suppley is that the money comes from the concessions. So, right? That's why they won't take just the promotion, they want the promotion and the concessions.
Well, it's kind of the backup, it's the insurance.
Well, again, I'll go back to Brian. Wouldn't it make sense, in your opinion, for the city to take complete control of this?
I agree with you 100% as far as, and I can see what Shirley's saying about, you're going to phone and call somebody like that, but I say the same thing as anyone else. You have to start somewhere. PMI didn't start by calling Cher. They started by calling the agents that get them to those people. Well, it's the same as if I went in business tomorrow as a promoter myself, I'd be doing the research on the internet of where to contact these agents and everything else. Everyone has to start somewhere, and they're both great.
We have a, I'm sure you would agree with this, Shirley, because I know you've supported local musicians and artists.
Oh, gosh, yes.
We have a ton of great musicians in the Fox Valley. Couldn't we just book them for the first year in the amphitheater? Don't you think Janet Planet and Tom Thiebeau and John Harmon could sell out the amphitheater?
Okay, but, you know, we're going to have to charge them. We're, and they aren't going to be able to pay that much to come in.
All right, so bottom line is, you're going to go with PMI, it looks like.
Yeah, I just think that this is, this is a venue that's far bigger than anybody ever imagined, and it's not for just the local people that want to call up their friends because they're talented.
All right, let's move to a different issue. The Five Rivers Resort, this is the condo proposal for the Fox River. And I read in the paper that the Five Rivers President, Tom, is it Doig?
Doig, I think so.
Okay. He told the Convention and Visitors Bureau that there's a 90% plus chance of this happening. Do you support this, Brian?
I haven't fully decided yet. I will, as far as, I've only known pretty much what you've read in the paper of how much it will cost by tax dollars and what they bring in. When I see a full timeline of what way they plan on doing it, how the money's going to be, once again, as far as, and when I, when I see stuff down of how it's going to process and everything, where my example is maybe the first year, for example, like how the apartments that got approved were, you don't build something else until so many condos are rented and paid for.
Right.
Compared in as far as with that, the two big apartment places that we voted through a while ago, where they're only building one right now, and they're not going to build a second one until it's either 75 or 80% occupied. And I think that if I can see something on paper for this Five Rivers, that it sounds all awesome, and want to hear from the restaurateurs out there, the people, the taverners.
What if they want $7 million in taxpayer money?
No.
And a TIF district?
No.
No?
No.
Shirley, would you support $7 million in taxpayer money in a TIF district?
But that's not how it works. We, TIF, yeah, but that's different from saying, "Okay, you know, fellows, for the next, you know, 20 years, we're taking $7 million and adding it onto your tax bill." That's not how it works.
Okay, let me back up for a second. Do you support the general idea of a condo development on the Fox River?
I think that that could work, because it's appropriate for the water. I think that's very valuable land and waterfront. And the marina, the bait shop, the fishing guides, you know, people come to Oshkosh, where can you find a boat and get a guide and all these things? I think that that would be good for the community, for tourism.
Okay. Brian, do you think we can get condos, 120 units they're talking about, right?
At least, it sounds as many, yes.
Yeah. Do you think we'd have even close to 100% occupancy for that?
I don't think so, but sometimes it surprises you where money pops up and people do pay that price.
Well, because quite frankly, this, to me, this is starting to feel like deja vu all over again, because with the 100 block, which is not condos, but luxury apartments, we heard that this was going to be so great, you know, people are lining up, and I just found out today before the show, Mr. Ganther himself admits, he says there's 72% occupancy in there, which, I don't know, three years ago, when this was agreed to, I was led to believe that by this time, there'd be 100% occupancy with people waiting to get in. Was that your understanding?
Well, it was understanding until, I will say, until I heard the prices that he was charging the first year for rent of the apartments. I mean, when I, after I heard the prices he was charging of the different type bedroom styles, places there were, then I sat back and said, "I don't know where people in the City of Oshkosh are going to pay that rate." Then, the next year, so he dropped some of the pricing, and some more places got rented, which, I mean, it goes with the show as far as...
Well, I found out today from OshkoshNews.org, a very good website, that the property is actually $150,000 behind in city property taxes. Did you know that?
I was made aware of that from a city resident about two weeks ago, and with being gone on vacation weekend, investigated, but I agree with your correct.
Because Mr. Ganther told Oshkosh News, "I have informed most of the council members and some of the candidates of what's going on." Did he inform you?
I have not heard a word from him, no, I have not.
Did he inform you, Shirley?
Yes, I had a call from him.
Okay. And how do you feel about this, the fact that it's $150,000 behind in taxes?
Well, that means he's paying a lot of taxes. And it's the taxes that would be due that on the 31st of January, you can pay it, I mean, I pay mine in December, so I can deduct it on my taxes, but you can go to the 31st and pay it, or you can also spread it over for payments.
Right.
And he elected not to pay that January. And I don't know, you know, what he's doing, but I believe in two weeks' time, he'll have the first payment in, which would be a quarter of that.
But he did say, apparently he wrote a letter to Jackson Kinney, who's our Director of Development, is that right?
Right.
And in his letter, he said that the reason why he was having trouble attracting residential tenants was due to a local overbuilt apartment inventory and a low home mortgage interest rate environment. Let's focus on local overbuilt apartment inventory. If that's true, doesn't that say we shouldn't build any condos at this point?
Pretty much so, and that's where, back a while ago, when the apartment complexes came up, that I'd commented, "We had enough apartments in the city already," and that the new pla, the big places were going to hurt the little guy like you or I that might own three different apartments in town and get rent off of them to make our income for things.
Right, right.
And I go back with that, where this now, you have those 100 block, where you have the empty apartments, you have the first floor, which has not been a thing done for businesses at all.
Well, he says he's going to bring in an Italian restaurant. I love Italian restaurants, by the way.
When is my question? My question is when, because I believe his liquor licenses do it pretty soon too, from the place that he got.
Well, he didn't say when, but he said it's coming. But Shirley, overall, has, with all of these things, has the 100-block project been worth it?
Well, Ben Ganther is telling you, this is his opinion. There are other apartment complexes that have been built and that are at 90 to 100% filled. And so I suppose he might even have to say, "Okay, what do I have to do, what's missing here that maybe the other places have?" So that's Ben's talking. And I think that lower interest rates for home buyers can also attribute to that, because there are people that might say, you know, "For the difference, I'm going to buy a home."
But Shirley, the city keeps telling us, "We got to create tax incremental finance districts for these kinds of projects." If we had known three years ago, that in three years, he's going to have only a 70% occupancy rate, he's not going to have any retail or other businesses on the first floor like he promised, and he's going to be $150,000 behind in taxes, would both of you at that time, now again, who has all that information, but some of us were saying it might happen, would you vote for a tax incremental finance district?
I don't believe I would have, and that's the same thing you're saying with this other new place.
Do you think that because of this situation, Shirley, that future TIF districts have to be under a little bit more scrutiny before we vote for them?
I think so, but I think TIFs are set up to either address blighted area.
True.
Or to encourage new jobs or some kind of job opportunities. And so I think that, when you look at that, I think, if you want to go way back, I never approved the whole 100-block coming down, so that's where I'm coming from. So I'm trying to be very open to what we've done. Now let's live with it, and let's move on.
That's fair. I want to give you both a statement that you've made, and ask you if you want to back away from that statement. I'll start with Brian. You were quoted in the paper as saying, "I strive to keep progress to a minimum." What does that mean?
What that means is, like I said two years ago, where I believe progress is needed in the City of Oshkosh. But as we've said, where, to me, the amphitheater, it may turn out to be a good project, but it went so fast, not too many people knew about it. It wasn't laid out in broad black and whites of, "This is how this can be done, this is going to be done." It just happened so fast of one meeting to the next, and we had an amphitheater, and next we have the whole big grandstand or the grass area and everything being done really fast, and who's donating, I mean, people donating the money, and it just overwhelms you.
But if you're going to do these things, Brian, isn't it better to do them fast, rather than to keep them lingering?
I don't mean to keep them lingering. My point is, as far as the band, the band show would have been awesome by itself. Waterfest has survived on grass for 12 years at the waterfront. Okay? I'm looking at what's going to happen when the boaters can't even see this thing from the river anymore because of the way it's going to be built up on the river. You know, Oshkosh on the water, okay, here's amphitheater, now they can't be seen from the water.
Right.
And so, I mean, that's, and I look as far as, I still stay with it, where I say, "Look at last year." The bid group spent about $1,000 for six Friday night movies at the parks, which I believe brought a lot of people to downtown Oshkosh. A lot of stores didn't stay open at 9 o'clock, which I thought would have been kind of smart because we were bringing people downtown to have movies.
Very good point.
But a lot of businesses didn't stay open, but at least the park was a good crowd. I know five out of six Fridays, and one was not the best weather, but five out of six Fridays was a good amount of people in that park.
But when you, but when you use language like "keep progress to a minimum," can't you see how that kind of makes people think that Brian Peschel's going to vote against everything? And pretty much you have.
I can, I can see what you're saying there, and that's why I've told you that as far as, I'm not against progress, but I just would like to see it, like I say, done slowly and a smart way, to little by little.
You don't need enough deliberation on some of these projects.
Right.
Not enough public buy-in.
Right, from the public.
All right, now Shirley, maybe...
What did I say?
It must have been a year ago, when the council was voting on money for the riverfront, and you equated it with investing in butter burger baskets. You said it's like two butter burger baskets.
Okay.
Now, in hindsight, do you wish you hadn't said that?
Oh, well, it's a nice line catcher, and I wasn't thinking of that. I was trying to put it in context when I said to the city manager, "All right, the tax bill, how much is this going to cost the taxpayer?" And I'm thinking, it was $7 and some cents. And I'm thinking, so what can you equate it with? I mean, it's not, it's not going out for dinner, for a steak dinner. It, you know, it's like...
But don't you think that it was perceived by many as being insensitive to tax increases? In other words, if someone were to say, "I don't want my taxes raised for this project," you would say, "Well, look, it's just like buying a hamburger." It was almost like you were saying, "Don't complain about it."
Oh, no. I was trying to put it in a context that people could understand.
Right.
You know, how much is that out of my pocket? It's not a $10 bill.
Right. But Shirley, isn't that a little bit misleading?
I mean, I would say, as a teacher, that's what you do. You try, you know, you try to get some image.
I do that all the time.
Yeah.
And, but as a teacher. But isn't that though a little bit misleading, because it might be two butter burger baskets for the project, but then that doesn't account for the future maintenance costs, security costs and all that? So in fact, it's really more than that, isn't it? It's not like two butter burger baskets, a couple of Big Macs, fries in a shade.
I stay local, Culver's is Wisconsin. And I'm serious about that. What, you know, the riverfront is for the public. It has to be for the public, and so I guess what I was saying was, this is our investment in the future for our grandchildren. You know, for 50, 75 years, people are going to say, "Thank God that council saved the river for the people."
All right. So you did not mean to suggest that people shouldn't complain about their taxes?
No, goodness, I complained.
Okay.
Can I comment on her point?
Yes, go ahead.
And I'll always say this as far as, I know she's taken a lot of grief for saying "two butter baskets" or whatever, but I will say, as far as, for people that talked to me, they did get most of the message. And I say that she, she brought out a point that she's been heard a lot of time as far as "two butter burger baskets." Well, it was funny and comical when she said it, and we all laughed about it, but even people that asked me did get a little more understanding because they related to it. And sometimes you got to get that low to relate to the people out there who don't understand the bonding and the price of everything, and so I give her credit for saying something like that, although she's taken a lot of grief for it.
Okay.
But it did, a lot of people that commented to me understood a little bit more of what it was really going to mean to them, of about $7 compared to 20 or 10, $7 million over six years.
Right, it did help put it in perspective.
Well, it was less than going to a movie and having popcorn.
Right. Again, but again, I would ask you to look at the future costs.
Oh, yeah, but it's an investment.
All right. Now here's, here's something that hopefully both of you can help us understand. I've been reading lately that because of the Bush administration, we might lose all of our community development block grant funding. Shirley, can you explain to our viewers what would that mean, and what can the city council do? Let's assume we do lose that. What can we do?
Okay, the only thing I can think of right now is to be proactive, and I think we should be writing to our congresspeople in Washington.
What does the CDBG money go for?
Okay, it goes for programs for poor people who need help. Let's say that their roof is leaking and they have no money. It goes, so it's to keep neighborhoods so that they don't become blighted. It helps varying groups, for example Christine Anne Center, the Sienna Center for the halfway house for women that are trying to get back into society.
So it's got a lot of socially worthwhile causes.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if we lose it, we could be literally devastated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And cities, see, we're, we get this because we are a city of 50,000 people. Now, smaller cities don't even get, they're not even on the radar for this.
Right. Brian, what are your views on CDVG and what happens if we lose it?
Well, I think if we lose it, it's the same as you're seeing throughout other parts of the state or different areas where those type of groups are going to have to go on local fundraising things, and that becomes difficult. And if that becomes on hard times, I feel sorry for those groups, but I agree, we have to get more people involved to get those people to have everybody write to the state government, to senators, representatives for them. And otherwise, like I say, I look at just even example in today's paper, where as far as, when you talk about money's disappearing, the kids that, in a high school down in Milwaukee suburb, are selling $47 sweatshirts to keep their coaches employed.
Right.
I mean, that's, I'm just saying, with those type of grants there, with those type of groups, you could see the same thing, Christine Anne Center going on a local fundraiser drive.
Is it true, Brian, that you have been critical of the way the city allocates this community development block grant money? I mean, don't we allow a private organization essentially to decide who gets it? Were you one of the councilors who believes that the city council should take back control of that, or I may have you confused with Mr. Esslinger?
Mr. Esslinger brought it up. I back on it, because I do remember before I got in the council that, and yes, I know it's a tearjerker, the night that all happened, whatever, where each person got up from their own group, and I pity the council members that sat up there.
Oh, yeah.
And had to decide who gets this and who gets that, because when you hear from one, you hear from all, and you can just sit there with tears in your eyes of, "Who do I support the most?"
But you wouldn't mind being in that position, though? You think we should do it that way?
I think it should come back to that way. That's what part of city government is, to me.
And I think this is a big disagreement among you. You like the way we're doing it currently, is that correct?
Because I realize that the foundation and the members on that committee are doing a lot more than any of us could do. They do follow-up visits, they find out how much of this money has been used and how is it being used, and so that there's an awful lot of interaction and follow-up, a real-time commitment. And so I think it's kind of like setting up a business proposal, and I don't know who else would do it.
What do you say to that?
The only thing I come back to that as far as is, depending how many groups there are, which I remember back when that, when I did watch it from being in the audience, was about, I'll say a dozen or 15 groups, I think, of different, that came for the money. Is, the only thing I say is, depending how much money is there, to put on a rotating basis, so everybody gets some. If it's, if there's 12 groups, four of them get it this year, or six get it this year, six get it next year, maybe rotating, that way everybody gets caught, because I thought back when it was done, which maybe now it's being done better, I, what I've investigated, I still think the same powerful groups get a lot of the money, but not everybody gets touched, and if you had a rotating basis, everybody get touched by some of the money then.
I want to go to a different issue. I would like you both to comment on the quality of the leadership of the city manager, Mr. Wallink. Now, I like Mr. Wallink. I think he's a genuinely nice man. I like him. But he was quoted as saying in the paper when asked about the Five Rivers proposal and the money we might need for that, he said, "What things will be ahead for the city? I have not been involved in that discussion." Shirley, do you think we should expect our city manager to be more hands-on with something like that? Shouldn't he be directly involved in those discussions?
I'm sure, I'm sure he, he is involved, probably as the first talks are starting, maybe he's not. But I think, I find him very knowledgeable. You know, maybe at that point, he said he didn't know, because they didn't know. You know, I mean, that first presentation I went to for the redevelopment authority, they did not give us any specifics, but I think almost any question I go and ask him, he can provide an answer or he will get back to me.
So you've been satisfied with his level of leadership in the city?
I'm impressed with his base of knowledge. I would like to see him, at the end of the council meeting, have a "What's Good For The City?", and I would like him to tell everybody one good thing that's coming up, because there are so many things that are happening, and most people don't know about it.
Okay.
So I think maybe in getting out the message, I would ask him to do...
All right. Brian, what are your view on the city manager?
I think for what his title is, he does a very good job. I thought kind of the same thing as what you're saying when it came onto paper that way, but then I sat back and thought about it more, and I thought, well, as far as, I don't believe he didn't know nothing at that time. I mean, as far as, as a city manager, he may have had to say that to keep things quiet for a while, who knows? But I look at it this way, as far as, same with any other business, that when you have the type of government where it's the council, then you got the manager, the CEO, and you got all the branches below it of everything, that until the planning commission has it figured out with this company of Five Rivers Group, and the infrastructure that's needed by the public works and everything else is going to happen, that when that all comes together, then to me, it would be given to the CEO, the city manager, to say to the council as far as, "Here's, here's the whole program, this is my opinion on this or that or whatever." So I mean, I don't consider that a bad comment that he said there, but I can see where you're So I mean, I don't consider that a bad comment that he said there, but I can see where you're coming from with it. But to me, a top man like that, that's why it's broken down that way. I would like to see him more involved where it would have been different that because it's a big, you're talking that much million dollars. I would have think the planning commissioner, which is Jackson Kinney, would have came to him and said, "We have this group here that's going to come here and present this to us, and I want you to be here so you do know firsthand because this is a major money thing for the city." So I mean, in certain areas could be done differently. But I think for what he does, like Shirley says, I email him a question. I get answers back. I mean, anytime you call him, you do get answers. And I found that's one thing that I think a head person should have that compared to, I'll get you an answer in a week or two, you get an answer usually.
We have a very short time left here. I want to make sure we get the closing statement. Shirley, why don't you look into camera one and tell people why they should return you to the city council on April 5th?
Okay, well, I've had the honor of serving the community for four years. And if you approve most of the time of what I say and what I do, I ask that you would support me in this election on April 5th and just give one vote for Shirley Robin Dromatics. And I will continue working as hard as I can.
All right, Brian, you can look into camera three and tell people why they should return you to the council on April 5th.
Thank you. And as far as, yes, I would appreciate the vote on April 5th where I've spent two years luckily and happily to be a city council member. It was exciting two years ago to be elected. I've learned an awful lot in the two years of many things that I've learned from the city of bonding, budgeting, big investments, voting this way or that way for what the public has asked me to do. If you're happy with the way I voted for the public, being that I do live and love the city of Oshkosh, I'd appreciate your vote again. And just again, on April 5th, please, I'd ask for your vote, but also just get out and vote. That's the main thing. Represent your city strong and do get out and vote. But I certainly would appreciate your vote.
I got to say, these two are so nice. It's so tough to ask them tough questions. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Tony.
All right. When we return, we will have our own Cheryl Hens and Meredith Shireman. And they shall tell us why they should be brought to the council. So stay with us.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom. And that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh. I'm Tony Palmieri, guest hosting for Cheryl Hens. She is running for the Oshkosh Common Council. And guess what? She is sitting on my left. She will be interviewed in this, in this segment as a candidate for the Oshkosh Common Council, as will on my right, Meredith Shireman, who is seeking a seat on the council. Thank you both for being here. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I want to start off by asking you both to comment on, what do, we'll start with you, Meredith. What do you, what is there in your experience, in your opinion, that most qualifies you to be in the Oshkosh Common Council?
Good question. I have 13 years of business experience. And with that experience, it just has made me constantly question how we do things operationally, constantly question, can we do things better, do things different? And so that's my whole entire background. I don't come to this with all the answers, but I do come with negotiation skills, great communication skills, things like that.
And you were a speech major, right?
I was.
Speech communication major, okay. Cheryl, what is key in your experience that you think best qualifies you for the council?
Well, I think a few things. You know, been self-employed for a number of years. Have served on various commissions and boards through the city for 12 years, one of which I serve on with Meredith, the Board of Appeals. I've been on that for, I believe, five years now. And, you know, I've done this show, which has enlightened me to a lot of different things. I've also followed what the city council has done forever, it seems.
All right, speaking of following the council, as both of you know, on March 8th, the council is going to vote on management of the amphitheater. And it looks like the two main options under consideration are PMI, which is out of Green Bay, they run the Resh Center, or the Supley-Hopper Group, which is local, those Fratellos folks and so on. Those look like the two options. Meredith, if you were going to be voting at that meeting, what would you vote for?
The March 8th vote coming up?
Yeah. How do you want the amphitheater to be managed? PMI, Supley, or something else?
Well, I guess I wasn't part of the committee process at all. I do, I am in possession of both proposals, and I think that they both have good merits. You know, I don't know if I'm in position to tell you which one.
Forget about being a candidate. As a citizen, as a citizen reading those proposals, did one strike you as stronger?
You know, it did.
You're not going to tell us which one, though?
But I mean, just reading, reading a proposal and having collaboration and being involved in a committee are completely two different things. So I think they both have great merits. I think that we should let the committee, the ones who have the charge to make that decision, make the decision.
Oh, so you think that the city council should just agree with what the committee decided?
No, I didn't say that.
All right.
I think that it's a shame that there wasn't city council members involved in that committee for starters. Second of all, I don't think the committee actually was diverse enough. It didn't have any ordinary citizens, if you will. It had three city heads and it had two, two people who had extensive experience in that. But I don't think it was a diverse committee. I think it needed some average citizens, and I think it needed some city council members. And I think within that committee, they would be the ones to make the decision.
Do you think that the city should manage this and handle concessions?
Tom Stefani clearly says that they can't handle it, so.
Although back in November, he said they could handle this.
You're right. He did. He did. And I think there's, you know, it's interesting that now he's changed his mind. But he has now come to the table and said, wow, this is, I think, bigger than he can handle. So he's liked the experts to do it.
Okay. Cheryl, PMI, Supley, or something else?
Well, I agree with Meredith that I think that the committee should have been more diverse. There should have been some council members on that committee so that we knew going into this a little bit more information.
Although the argument was that what you want in the committee like that are people that have some experience with these kinds of items. A council member wouldn't have had that kind of experience.
Well, no, not necessarily. The council member necessarily would not have had the experience. But the council is who's going to make, I mean, they're the final arbiter of this decision. And therefore, I think they should have been part of the decision-making process all along. You know, you can't just bring them into something like this at the end.
So now on March 8th, they're going to probably pick either PMI or Supley.
Well, you know, I've got some mixed feelings on this. I wish that the city would have put in a bid. I wish that there had been some other bids considered. I think that PMI certainly has an extremely impressive track record. But by the same token, Supley is local. On the other hand, Supley's been tossed out of some areas, too. You know, they've been tossed out of the Green Bay Packers and-
Well, PMI was also.
Yes, but Timber Rattlers also threw out the Supleys. So, you know, I've got real mixed feelings on it.
All right, let's talk about a different issue, the Five Rivers Resort. This is the condominium proposal. The Five Rivers LLC President, Tom, is it Douig, I believe? He told the Convention and Visitors Bureau that there's a 90% plus chance that this is going to happen. Do you support this?
It's way premature to say whether or not I support it or not.
He seems pretty certain, 90% plus.
Well, good for Tom Douig or whatever his name is. But Cheryl Hens doesn't have enough information yet to say whether or not-
What information do you need?
Well, I want to know exactly what the city is going to be expected to do. Now, all of a sudden, Jackson Kinney now says there's not going to be any taxpayer dollars involved. I don't know how you can do this without taxpayer dollars.
For sake of argument, let's say, let's say they end up asking for a TIF district and $7 million. Would you go for that?
I'd want to-
They bring in over $50 million.
Well, that's what they say. But Ben Ganther also made promises about the 100 block as well. And that, as we now know, as of today, has not come to fruition either.
We'll get to that later.
Yes, I'm sure we will. We, we need to take a good, hard, long look before any more TIF districts are created. And that includes viability of projects. I have heard this council time and time and time again say that it is not their charge to take a look at project viability, market viability of a project. Well, that is absolutely lame, as far as I'm concerned. You do need to take a look at project viability, market viability, because you're putting this on the backs of the taxpayers for the first umpteen years, maybe 27, 30 years out, before we realize any gain.
Meredith, if they ask for $7 million in a TIF district, would you go for that?
I think it sounds reasonable.
That does sound reasonable. On what basis?
Taxpayer money doesn't go into TIF districts. It's not using our taxpayer money for it, to fund it.
What about the $7 million additional dollars? That wouldn't be TIF districts.
Well, we, first of all, they haven't asked for that. They haven't come out and saying, Jackson Kinney has went out of his way in saying, "We are not using general obligation funds" and-
Yeah, although that was a change, though, right? Because originally, it was, it looked like $7 to $9 million.
It did, and I will give you that. But, you know, again, he's the expert. Maybe he's found grant money from the state. Maybe he's, you know, I don't know. But he has come out clearly and saying that it is not the intent to use any city money.
And I just want to go back for a moment because I disagree a little bit. Taxpayer money is involved in a TIF district. You can't do a TIF district without it. And the way it's involved is, first of all, your county and your school districts are not getting money upfront. Secondly, you're having to do infrastructure for these things. And that's coming out of general obligation funds, or you're bonding for it, or whatever. But it is coming out of taxpayer dollars.
Right. And you agree with that. You just think it's worth the investment?
Well, it doesn't directly come out of taxpayer dollars, though. And the schools in the county get the payback. That development may not happen if you don't put that TIF assistance upfront, though.
And they get the money back if it pays off.
You're right. You're right.
And there's no guarantee that these things are going to pay off.
But you like the idea of the condo development. You think that's a good development for the Tif River?
I do.
And you think, even though our luxury apartments on the 100 block-
Are only at 82% full.
Well, I think he said 72.
Okay.
Right? But that, that is sufficient evidence that we could fill condos?
I have to disagree with Cheryl. I don't think that's our, I don't think that's the city. If the developer thinks that he can fill those, then that's his charge. That's, that's not our charge.
Okay. It's just that once you put up a condo development, and let's say it doesn't work, I mean, what do you do at that point? You're then, you're kind of stuck with them at that point, aren't you?
You know, I like to think that he has done his homework. I like to think that, I'm not, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Let's talk about the 100 block development. Cheryl just mentioned that it came out today, we're taping on March 3rd, and OshkoshNews.org, a very good website, by the way, to follow these campaigns, did a story. It turns out that the 100 block development is $150,000 behind on taxes. And Mr. Ganther, the developer, has said that he has had trouble attracting residential tenants due to a local overbuilt apartment inventory. Meredith, the fact that he's $150,000 behind in taxes as a candidate, I mean, do you find that troubling?
I find it troubling. However, he is on, he's on target to pay those taxes back. March 1st, he's going to pay his first payment. He says by September 15th, he will have all of the taxes paid in full with penalties and with interest paid. So sometimes we have a little blip in the road. That doesn't mean that all of his investments are bad.
And not to pick on Mr. Ganther, but he was quoted in the story, he told OshkoshNews.org. He said, "I have, I have informed most of the council members and some of the candidates of what's going on." Were you one of the candidates that he informed?
Yes.
Okay. Did he inform you?
No, I've never spoken with Mr. Ganther about this.
Okay. And he is a supporter of yours?
I think so.
Okay. If you were elected to the council and Mr. Ganther came before the city with business, would you feel comfortable voting on it? I don't, he's saying, he's saying he informed some of the candidates. I don't understand why not all of the candidates.
You have to ask him. I have no idea. I clearly can make a judgment decision based on somebody I like or don't like. I can certainly do that.
Okay. But in hindsight, based on all this, he's $150,000 behind in taxes. He's at 72% occupancy. He said three years ago there'd be something on the first floor, restaurant, retail, or something. None of that has happened. Is that evidence as why we should be more critical of, this isn't a TIF district, right?
Absolutely. The TIF district was created for this project, for Mr. Ganther. And here we are, $150,000 in arrears. He's first now, three or four years into this, looking at getting his first retail tenant. 72% occupancy and 82% when, something about including apartments with deposits on their waiting list. I guess I don't understand why he's got a waiting list if he's not at 100% occupancy.
But in hindsight, Cheryl, in hindsight, Cheryl, let's say the council, three, four years ago, whenever it was, had just voted this project down. Would it have been worth just leaving that block empty with nothing?
Well, I don't know that it would have just been left empty. There were other people who had, you know, proposals out there. And I don't recall offhand what they were asking for from the city. But I don't think it would have just sat empty. But this, being more critical of who we're creating TIF districts for and the manner in which they're being created is exactly why I'm proposing that greater care be taken in the creation of these TIF districts, and that includes market viability. Every other community that I've talked to in recent weeks and months takes a good, hard, long look at TIF districts before they create them.
So in the case of the Five Rivers project, what would that mean? If a study was done that said they're only going to be at 50% occupancy after a year, would that mean to you it's not a viable project?
Very well could be, yes.
Okay, what would you say about that, this market viability for TIFs?
I would say, no. You have to look at long-term. The same thing with Ben Ganther. He's going to be, he's going to make his payment in, what, four weeks from now? And in six months, he's going to be paid in full. We can't say that this project is not a success because he's back, he's behind one quarter on his taxes. He has a plan in place. He's got now a waiting list. He's got, it sounds like two of his four retail units rented. I think that there's momentum there, and I'm encouraged by that.
Okay, so you think it was an appropriate use of a tax incremental finance district, even given what we've been talking about here?
I think there's, this is a minor bump in the road and clear skies are ahead.
All right. Cheryl, you've been critical of TIF districts, as have I. But how do you answer the question that, well, what would you do in its place?
Well, the same thing that townships do, where they can only use TIF districts to get rid of, say, remediation situations that they have to clear up and things like that. You know, you focus on keeping your tax rate low. You focus on having good infrastructure or putting it in and putting it on the back of the developer, which is what several townships do, including the town of Grand Shoot, which has the very successful Fox River Mall. They put in that infrastructure and they assess the developer for that. And they offered no TIF district because they couldn't. And yet, these developers are still coming there. If you have good things to offer, you don't necessarily have to use a TIF district as bait to get them there. And townships are proof of that.
Meredith, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't see a lot of commercial development going up in town, in townships around. TIF districts are an economic tool that the city can use. I mean, let's face it, there's competition out there for bringing new business in. And it's, we have to keep in mind that it's a tool that the city can use. So I still maintain that TIF districts are-
And you think that they've overall been, been used well for the city of Oshkosh?
We're seeing that some of them are being paid off mature, ahead of schedule. I think that that's a good sign. And imagine now all the, all the tax dollars that are going back on the roll because of that. And you don't know if those things would have happened without the assistance of a TIF.
Okay.
And I will maintain that we are the highest, we have the most number of TIFs out of any community around. And yet, everyone else seems to be having more economic development than we do. Now, why is that?
Who has more economic development, though, than us going on?
The city of Appleton, for one. The city of Fond du Lac has an inordinate amount of it. The city of Nina, the city of Menash is putting stuff up.
Okay. But what's the downside? I still don't get the downside that we're talking here with TIF districts. What's the downside of it?
Well, for 20 years, no tax money goes into the county or the school district. Is that correct?
Even more than 20 years, the majority of ours, well, I shouldn't say the majority, but a large number of ours are greater than 20 years, 23 to 27 years out.
Okay. But again, how do you know that development would have been, come to fruition without it?
You make a good point. And see, what I would like to see the city do is put that question under more scrutiny. Would this project take place without the TIF? My fear has always been that the city is using the TIF as a sweetener when it's not needed. And we don't, we don't know. I don't think the city's been asking tough enough questions. I know that in many cities in Wisconsin, the developer goes under a much more rigorous questioning about whether this TIF is needed. And I'm not saying that we haven't asked questions here, but with 19 or 20 TIFs, it seems like we just give them out the moment the developer says, "I need it."
I have a hard time believing that because the TIF, we have to keep in mind the TIF districts also have to be approved by the school officials and the county officials. We can't just say, okay, yeah, sure, you can have that.
Although they have tended to rubber stamp them, it seems.
I, you know, okay, even if you say that, then there should be some accountability on their hands as well.
That's true.
And there's also personal guarantee by the developer for these TIF districts as well. So I, I would completely disagree that we're just handing out TIF districts left and right.
Okay, let's move, let's move to a different topic. In the news lately has been the issue of community development block grant money and how due to the budget trouble in Washington, we may lose all of this. If that were to happen, Cheryl, what could the city council do? I mean, that money, what is CDGB money used for currently?
Well, low to moderate income housing improvements primarily.
So it's critical?
It's very critical.
So what do we do if we lose it?
That's anybody's guess. I don't know. We're going to have to tighten our belts a little bit more in order to help keep some of these funds, some of these things going in the central city district, which is primarily where a lot of this money is used.
Currently, I believe the city, in allocating that money, we have a private organization do it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you support that?
No, I don't.
How should it be done?
It should go back to being done the way it used to be.
Which was?
I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee. We would break down into various subcommittees. And we looked at the proposals, we ranked them, and then our recommendations went on to the city council. I think that that is a more effective way of doing things.
But then people would come and testify before the city council?
Yes, yes.
How do you feel about this, Meredith?
My understanding is it was disbanded because it was ineffective. It was, and cumbersome. We put it in now the hands of the community foundation, who, that's what they do for a living. So they can make those decisions versus the people coming to the council meeting and, I don't want to say pleading their case, but making a case for themselves and having the council decide.
And you're, so you're comfortable with the way it's done presently, rather than go back? You seem to be saying, let's go back to the old way?
Well, absolutely. The money has been given to the city.
Right.
And the city, as the caretaker or custodian of that money, I think needs to play a more active role in how it's distributed. We shouldn't just, there's, there's too much of farming out some of this responsibility for funds that were given by the government.
All right, very good. Let's, let's talk about the pace of downtown redevelopment. Meredith, from what I've sensed in the past, watching you speak at forums and whatnot, you seem to think that- you seem to think that the pace has been about appropriate. Is that right?
We have momentum right now.
You think we have momentum?
Mm-hmm.
And so, for people who say, "Let's slow it down," you think that they're just halting progress?
No. I don't think, "Hey, let's slow down" means halting. Uh-uh.
Okay. But you like the pace that we're going?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Your view on this, the pace of downtown redevelopment?
I'm not entirely comfortable with it. I don't think that we have seen enough payback from what we've invested in it so far. I think that some of the things that are going on downtown are very good, but I think we need to be more careful, more judicious about how we're doing certain things, and who we're giving money to for this, that, and the other.
You've said in the past that businesses are leaving downtown.
They have left downtown.
Well, what would be some examples? Who's left downtown?
Well, Sherwin-Williams is one of the biggest. And, you know, again, this goes back to the OCDC thing, Oshkosh Commercial Development Corp. You know, Sherwin-Williams had been a staple in downtown for years, and they left. No one ever heard of Rob Kleiman from OCDC. They never heard of OCDC itself. Now, that tells me that OCDC is not making itself present with these downtown business owners.
What do you think of OCDC?
And then, you've got a lot of other smaller businesses.
I think that they work very hard. I've taken a look at their annual report. I think that they're doing fine things. I can't speak for Sherwin-Williams. I can't speak for that, but I know that Rob Kleiman has been instrumental in some of the small businesses that have went in downtown, because they've told me that.
Okay. Let's talk about the city budget. They raised taxes 5% in the last budget?
Yes.
Okay. Had you been on the council, would you have voted for that?
I don't think so, no.
Why?
Well, there were some things within the capital improvements plan, for example, that I think should have come out. You know, I...
For example?
Well, I don't like all these splash pads that were proposed. Now, granted, they were removed, but, you know, that and some of the things that were spent on Riverside Park, I think that that should have come out as well.
Which... Is a 5% tax increase reasonable?
I'm looking for 2% to 3%, I think is more reasonable. It's hard to say if you would vote for 5.7, because it's just an arbitrary number. Like Cheryl, there was a couple of things that I'd questioned, but overall, it's a very difficult question to answer at this point.
But overall, you've been in the city for 10 years now, right? You've been back 10 years?
Ah, yeah, close, nine.
In that 10 years, have you perceived the council to be, for the most part, responsible with taxpayer dollars?
I think globally, they've been responsible. I think you're always going to get disagreements on where the priorities lie, and that's what it is today, and it's what it has been, and probably will be going forward.
Well, what ought to be the number one priority? Should it be the redevelopment of the downtown?
Ah, God, number one. I think that redevelopment is definitely right up there in importance.
For example, let's say we had to compete redevelopment of downtown against street improvement.
I would say redevelopment over street improvement.
How would you rank those?
I think they're both important.
Right.
You know, if you've got lousy streets, you're going to have a difficult time, I think, enticing people to come to a community that appears to be very rundown.
Okay. Let me ask the question a different way. This is what I hear about both of you, all right? Some... And it's the complete opposite thing. Some people are afraid that you, Cheryl Hens, are going to say no all the time. And some people are afraid Meredith Shireman, rhymes with fireman, I remember that, thank you for telling me that, that you're going to say yes all the time. That whenever a developer comes in, wants money for a project, for you, this is momentum, we got to do it. You, Cheryl, even though you say you want to just be more thoughtful about this, you're ultimately going to be in the Brian Peschel, Paul Esslinger, vote no mode and everything. So how do you both respond? How do you respond to the charge that you're going to say yes on everything? And how do you respond to the charge you're going to say no on everything?
Well, I will not say no on everything. I think that my track record on the board of development, while we're not... Or, board of development, on the zoning board, I think that even though we're not spending taxpayer dollars there, I think that I give thoughtful deliberation to each and every item that comes before us, and I vote accordingly. And it's not always going to be no, but it's not always going to be a rubber stamp yes either.
But you'd probably be more along the Esslinger-Peschel line, and they have voted predominantly no.
I might... Yeah, I probably would be along those lines, but, you know, I'm not going to say I'd always say no.
Right. And you have been predominantly, from your... From what you've been saying, you seem very comfortable with the five members of the council who've been voting yes on all these projects.
On your show the last time, you asked me who I relate well, most well to on the council. And I said, "Do you... I think Paul Esslinger makes great comments, and I also think Bill Castle does." I consider myself falling right in the middle. I really do.
But it is true, Meredith, is it not, that a lot of the powerful people in Oshkosh support your candidacy?
I think you should take a look at my committee. I have some powerful people in your words. I have 10 of them, in fact.
But what...
That make up my committee. And it depends what you call powerful. I've got two housewives. They think they're pretty powerful, and so do I, you know? I mean, do I have support, but I think...
But I mean, it seems like the big developer community is more comfortable with you than they would be with Cheryl.
You know, I don't know that to be true. I got top votes in the south and the east side as well. Not a lot of developers are over in that side, so I have to relate to them as well. You know, I'm not just the north and the west side vote-getters.
Sure. You know, we have only a little bit of time here left. Maybe we should go to our closing statements. Cheryl, why don't you start off? Looking to camera three, why should people vote for Cheryl Hens on April 5th?
Well, I think, as I've said all along, you know, I try to employ common sense in every vote that I make. I have served this community tirelessly for the last 12 years on different boards and commissions. I do bring a common sense approach to things, and, you know, that's... I think that that's one of the biggest things that I have going for me. I love this community. I'm not saying that I want progress to come to a screeching halt, but I do think that we have to be more judicious and better custodians of taxpayer dollars. We all work very hard for our money, and I think that we have to pay closer attention to how it's being spent, and start spending taxpayer dollars like we spend our own.
Thank you. Meredith Shireman, looking to camera one, why should people vote for you on April 5th?
I joined this candidacy three months ago for one simple reason. I wanted to help make Oshkosh an even better place to live and do business. I'm a serious candidate. I'm not single issue. I'm certainly not special interest. I represent all citizens in the city of Oshkosh. I work really hard to take different points of view, to ask questions. I'm relentless, actually. You could ask city staff, I'm really relentless on finding the answers and the correct facts, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. So I do ask for your vote on Tuesday, April 5th.
All right. Thank you very much. I must say, in the interest of full disclosure, that I did circulate signatures for Cheryl Hens to get her on the ballot. I've tried very much to be as fair as possible on this program, and of course, you're the judge of that. Please go to some good websites, EyeOnOshkosh.com, OshkoshNews.org. You go to my site, TonyPalmieri.com, to get much more information about these races, and please do vote on April 5th. And for Meredith Shireman and Cheryl Hens, I'm Tony Palmieri, hoping you join us again for another edition of Eye on Oshkosh. Take care.